Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna get these in order, so you might have to read a few communications.
The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor Abadana. Counselor Rodriguez. Counselor Lopez.
Present.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Perlatanda. Counselor Tejada.
Present.
Counselor Robinson. Counselor Bishop.
Present.
Counselor Ray Coopero. Ten members present, if you have a call, Madam Chairman. First order of a business.
Public speaking. We don't have any more.
No, public speaking.
So, public speaking. Any members of the public that wish to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have four minutes.
My name is Roman Paco. I live at 191 Linfield Street in Peabody, Mass. I was a resident of Chelsea from birth to October of 1965, then I moved to Peabody. I'm a Vietnam-era veteran and have been a member of the Polish-American Veterans Post Thirteen of Chelsea since 1965. First of all, I would like to congratulate all the elected members of the City Council and ask that they invite and encourage the newly-elected members to attend as many meetings as possible and that they give them as much assistance as possible so that they can start their term after they are sworn in. Second, the U.S. National Census is taking place. Everyone must be counted on April 1st, 2020. I would ask that you do whatever you can so that everyone is counted. In that way, Chelsea may receive more funding grants. Here's how the funding takes place. The federal government allocates funds to states based on population. The states, in return, give funding to the cities and towns. Chelsea has a good chance to receive funds because of their poverty level and also the minorities that live here. Finally, I ask that when meetings are held when the doors are not open to the public during non-operating hours, the public be informed of the address of the entrance on Washington Avenue as well as the handicap address on Washington Avenue. In the summertime, I don't mind standing outside and waiting until the doors are unlocked, but in the wintertime, it's pretty difficult if you have to park far away. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Paco. Anybody else for public speaking? Public speaking, going once, going twice, that portion of the meeting is closed. Approval of the minutes. Counselor Abamosu, accept and file. Seeing no objections, so move, Counselor. Communications from the city manager. We have a communication received from the city manager regarding a notice of waiver intent for Ms. Nancy Gifford for the position of Appraiser in the Assessors Department. Dear councilors pursuant to Administrative Code Section 11202, I am writing to notify you that it is my... Wait a minute. I'm sorry. I think I have the wrong communication here.
Ms. Gifford?
Yeah. Let me see, Ms. Gifford.
First one, Gifford.
That's not the one I have. I'll read it. Sorry about that. That it... I want... I am writing to notify you that it is my intention to hire Ms. Nancy Gifford, 15 Cedar View Street, Salem, Massachusetts, to the position of Appraiser in the Assessors Department and to grant her a waiver from the residency requirement set forth in the Administrative Code, Part IV, Section 11201. Ms. Gifford's resume is attached. There were only two Chelsea applicants for this position. Neither candidate met the minimum qualifications for the position. In accordance with Section 11202, I request that you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days. Can I have a motion? He accepts and filed a communication, but at some point, he wants to put in a request that some of these appointees come before the City Council. Come meet the City Council. Yes, new hires. All right, next communication.
Next communication. Notice of waiver intent. Dear councilors pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section 11202, I am writing to notify you that it is my intention to hire Ms. Chiana Callahan, 68 Olive Avenue, Malden, Massachusetts, to position of Water, Sewer and Drain Compliance Manager and to grant her a waiver for the residency requirement set forth in the Administrative Code, Part IV, Section 11201. Ms. Callahan's resume is attached. There were no Chelsea applicants for this position, which required a valid Massachusetts D3 drinking water operator license.
Can I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept and file a communication. If there are no objections.
Seeing none, so moved. Next communication. I'm gonna read it.
Go ahead.
We have a communication received from the city manager regarding a notice of waiver intent for Mr. Hector Ortiz to the position of Water Operator for DPW. Dear councilors pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section 11202, I am writing to notify you that it is my intention to promote Mr. Hector Ortiz, 1 Maryvale Lane in Peabody, Massachusetts, to the position of Junior Water Operator for the DPW and to grant him a waiver from the residency requirement set forth in the Administrative Code, Part IV, Section 11201. Mr. Ortiz has been employed with the Chelsea DPW since 2012. In accordance with Section 11202, I request that you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days. Can I have a motion?
Accept and file a communication, Madam President. Seeing no objection.
Seeing none, so move, Counselor.
Next communication. A list of zoning relief. In response to the council order requesting information on variances issued during the past two years, I have attached a report which provides detail on both variances and special permits issued since January 1, 2018. I hope this information is helpful.
Counselor Abadana.
Planning and development to talk about some of the variances that they did granted, and they satisfied my curiosity to the variances.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Next communication. Is zoning ordinance changed to accommodate 5G installation? Dear councilors, recently, the Federal Communications Commission approved new regulations to make it easier for wireless communications companies to implement 5G cellular technology. These regulations significantly limit the control that municipalities may exercise over small wireless installations and demand that your municipalities shorten the timeframe for review of installation requests. In order to ensure that our local laws comply with these new federal regulations, we need to make some changes to our existing wireless communications overlay district. The proposed zoning change replaces the existing section of this topic with an entirely new section that should allow full compliance with the new federal rules. I respectfully request that the City Council refer this proposed zoning change to the Planning Board for its recommendation and schedule a public hearing. The city solicitor and I will be available to answer any questions on this new provision.
Suspension and send it to the zoning board and schedule a public hearing.
Does anyone need to... Public hearing?
Yeah, there'd be a planning board.
Planning board.
There'd be an order under New Business that requires the same thing.
All right, so there's an order coming up under New Business, but I would like to ask for a recess and have the city manager explain this, because I'm a little confused. Planning and Development.
So, I'm not an expert in this field, but what I can tell you is this. Within the last year or so, the Federal Communications Commission's passed new regulations to make it easier for these wireless nationwide companies to move from their 4G networks to their 5G networks. And they specifically limited the authority that municipalities have to prevent that from happening and to have lengthy permitting periods. So, our old... Our existing ordinance right now has a couple of things that we can't continue to have. One, it has areas where we don't allow these installations at all, and that we... That is contrary to federal law right now. And second, the way it's written right now, everything requires a special permit, which means it's... Any kind of installation, even the most minor one, tends to take a long time. And that kind of regulatory scheme, the FCC no longer allows. So, what we're proposing is to make our ordinance consistent with what new federal law will allow for these 5G installations. And basically, what it does is really two things. First, it basically says these installations, as required by federal law, are allowed... Can be accommodated everywhere in the city, because you need to do that in order to make these 5G networks work. The second thing it says is if it's going... If... If one of these installations, and they tend to be these small little box-type things, if one of these installations is gonna go on an existing structure that already exists and is not gonna exceed five feet in height above the existing structure, it's gonna be allowed as a matter of right. And all you have to do is get a grant of loc... You have to go through a process to go to the DPW, get a grant of location, and you have to execute a licensing agreement with the city solicitor. But you don't need to go through the ZBA and the Planning Board. If you are installing it on a new pole, something new that hasn't existed in the city before, or its height is gonna be more than five feet above existing height, then you have to go through the special permit process. And so, that's the purpose of this new zoning change, which the solicitor and I feel will be in compliance with the new regulations issued by the FCC.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ambrosino. There's something coming up under New Business related to the topic. Next.
Next communication is transfer request for signalization upgrade project William Street corridor. I am writing to request that the City Council approve financial transfers that will allow the Department of Planning and Development to advance the first phase of traffic signal improvements on William Street. This is a situation that does not involve any appropriation of new funds. The monies requested were previously authorized for capital projects that are completed.
No.
There'd be New Business orders.
Counselor Bishop moves to waive the rest of the reading under suspension. And there's something coming up under New Business.
Under New Business. The next communication is FY '20 Park Grant, Voak Park. I'm writing to you with an upgrade on the city's pending park grant submission for the renovation of Voak Park and a request that the City Council approve.
May I waive the reading, lay it on the table, pending an order?
Well, except for filed communication, Bob. There was something under New Business.
Yeah, there's something coming up under New Business.
Yeah. Next communication. Eden Park renovations, additional appropriation request. This is a second letter this week involving park grant. This one relates to the grant secured last year for Eden Park. As you may recall, the city set aside a total of $350,000 for this project, $250,000.
Counselor Robinson moves to waive the rest of the reading, accept and file a communication. There'll be something coming up under New Business.
The next communication is free cash certification. Dear councilors, I am writing with some good news. Late Friday, the city received an unexpectedly early determination from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue on free cash. The numbers are very positive. We closed fiscal year 2019 with general fund free cash of $12,275,913. We also have enterprise fund retained earnings of water, $3,215,836, and sewer, $3,159,704. A copy of the DOR certification is attached. With free cash certified, I am requesting that the two previous park grant funding requests that I submitted last week be sourced from this newly-available free cash as opposed to the general stabilization fund. I have attached revised orders to implement this change. I do have certain other investments in the community that I wish to propose to the council, given this letter... Level of available free cash. However, I'm still working on the specifics of some of these requests. I expect to be coming to the City Council with these additional free cash funding proposals in early part of 2020.
Counselor Bishop?
May I move to the committee on conference?
Subcommittee... Move it to the Subcommittee on Conference.
Do you have the orders, Bobby?
The letter.
When the orders come up?
No, just the letter. I would like to have a meeting on this subject, not so much on the issues that he's talking about there. The... It's nice that the city of Chelsea has free cash again in the tune of $12 million. And as I said last year, that means that we budgeted $12 million too much. If there's $12 million left over from last year's budget, that's not very good budgeting, in my opinion. Yes, with a budget this size, you are gonna have some surplus, there's no question about that. $12 million is a lot of money. Now, can we spend $12 million? Yeah, I bet we could. But I think if we're half-smart, we'll put some of this money away for the... In the rainy day fund and the city stabilization fund. A recession is coming. Might not be this year, or might not be next year or the year after, but when it comes, one of the first communities that'll feel it the worst is the city of Chelsea. And the first year, you may not have to lay people off, I hope, but it is coming. So, let's prepare for it. Let's take some of this, or a good portion of this $12 million, and add it to what we already have in the stabilization fund, so when the recession does come, we'll have some money to put toward budgeting so we don't have to lay so many people off. So, I wanna bring that up at a conference with the city manager. I don't know what his plans are for the free cash, but I would urge him to say... Try to hold back a little on spending money. We've been spending money in the last two or three years, you know, kinda rapidly, and I think it's time for us to say, "Oh, let's put some money aside."
Thank you, Counselor.
The next communication is appointments to boards and commissions. Pursuant to Section 4.2 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. For appointment to the Traffic and Parking Commission, Mr. Aaron Kramer, 27 John Street, Chelsea, to serve the remainder of the term of Mr. Jorge Pezos.
Can we cut to side conversations, councilors, please?
Who has been removed for non-attendance. This term expires on December 15, 2020. For appointment to the Human Rights Commission, Ms. C. Nicole Barrett, 325 Commodore Square, Chelsea, to serve the remainder of the term of Reverend Sandra Whitley, who has resigned. This term expires June 30, 2021. For appointment to the Tree Board, Mr. Nicholas Boatwright, 6 Pembroke Street, Apartment 1, Chelsea, for a three-year term expiring in 2022. For reappointment to the Community Schools Advisory Board, Dr. Alice Marillo, 175 Carter Street, Chelsea, for a three... A new three-year term expiring on September 25, 2022. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. I've attached resumes for your review.
Can I have a motion?
Refer to a second reading.
Thank you, Counselor Robinson. Move to a second reading.
The next communication from the city manager. Fiscal year 2020 tax rates. Dear councilors, to follow up to my October 28, 2019, presentation on taxes and valuations, I am resubmitting for your consideration the document showing the impact of the six options presented for the residential exemption. The option range from the remaining of the current 30 percent to increasing the exemption to the maximum allowed 35 percent. I recommend that at its upcoming hearing on November 25, 2019, the City Council increase the residential exemption to 31 percent. In that case, and assuming adoption of the 175 percent commercial and industrial property tax shift, the residential tax rate will likely be 1340 pending DOR approval, and the commercial rate will be approximately 2718. This will result in the reduction of the average tax bill for the owner-occupied, single-family and three-family homes and modest average tax increase of varying amounts to other owner-occupied parcels. By selecting the 31 percent residential exemption amount, the City Council will have the opportunity to spread the benefit of the 35 percent exemption limit over future fiscal years. I've attached draft orders to appropriate council orders necessary to accomplish.
Can I have a motion? Accept and file a communication. Move it to a second reading.
Do you have the orders?
Yeah. Oh, there's an order coming up under New Business, and there'll be a public hearing scheduled as well for next week? Next week, November 25.
Monday. Is it?
Yeah. This following Monday, there'll be a public hearing for the 2020 tax rates.
Okay. Communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication received from the Chelsea Retirement Board regarding C-55 of the Acts of 2006 to permit... Well, you can ask them to explain it.
Okay.
To permit boards by local option to increase the dependent payable to accidental debt recipients to be equal to the paid to accidental disability recipients.
Can I ask them to read that? I'd like to take a recess and ask Mr. Shevko if you wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone and explaining.
Explain the communication.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah. Come right up. Just state your name, just for the public to hear.
My name's Joe Shevko. I chair the Chelsea Retirement Board. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. When a retiree retires on a disability, earlier, there was $312 for each dependent child under 18 years old or disabled child added to their pension. In 1987, the legislature passed legislation that would give that $312 to the disability retiree, the COLA increases for that $312. There was a glitch in the law. When that retiree died, the widow did not get the same benefit for their children, the increases. So, in 1987, they passed legis... In 2006, they passed legislation to correct that. So, if the retiree died, the widow would still get those increases and corrected the law. Twelve years ago, I spoke in front of the City Council to accept this provision. We only have four children that it applies to, and they had no problem with it. We had that fourth child, retiree, pass away, and that child's disabled, and we were going to pay that child that increase. The problem was, when we did this little research, we couldn't find the paperwork for the City Council's vote. I know the City Council had no problem increasing $300 a year for the cost of whatever this child was, but we couldn't find the paperwork. So, the reason why we're here today is just to reaffirm that vote so that we can have that on record, so we can give those four children... Right now, it's $950. It was $312 20 years ago. But we're just asking to reaffirm a vote for the City Council to put this on the books so that we have it in our records.
So, just to confirm, all you need from the council is just a roll call vote, just affirming the...
To accept provision of C-55, yes.
Okay, perfect.
I mean, years ago, I left their finger, and it was a done deal. Everybody had no problem with it, but we couldn't find the paperwork.
Okay.
So, the Retirement Board wanted me to come forward and just to reaffirm the vote so that we do have it on our record, that's all.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
To the chair, yes. What's your question, Mr.?
What year was that, that you believe the council voted on that?
It was 12 years ago, 2007.
2007?
Yes.
And there was no... There's no tape or no affirmative of the county's motion that night?
No, we looked through the records. We went to the city clerk's office, and we just can't find it. So, yeah.
And that's an important piece of what you were advocating for?
Absolutely. Again, it was only $300 a year, and so the City Council had no problem with the vote. And I don't know what happened, I really don't.
So, then it was $312 a year, correct?
That was 1987, and...
So, now it is...
It's $950 per child.
Per child.
We have four children right now.
Okay. So, was that the vote then, that it would be 900?
No, the vote would be to give whatever the current PERC tells us what... PERC is the institution that oversees the retirement boards. They instruct us what that payment would be. So, it was $312. Then it went up to 400, then it went up to 520. Over the last 20 years.
So, you're saying 900 is what it is now?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. It only goes up in small increments, and like I say, we only have four children. Really, when somebody retires from a disability, they have minor children. Two of the cases, they're handicapped, so they automatically get it.
Now, was there...
Okay, Counselor Brown.
One more question, Madam.
You really should not be speaking to him directly. Do you have any other direct...
It's very important if we're gonna...
Just ask your questions, we have another question here as well.
Okay, thank you. It's very important if we just wanna understand what we're voting on.
Understood. Absolutely. Ask the question.
Thank you, Madam Brown. So, was there an option that you could... That one could go into this, or is it automatically just satisfied through the...
It's automatic. When... When somebody retires on a disability, an employee, we figure out their pension, and then we see if they have any dependent children under 18 or handicapped children. And that's when this kicks in. We had three. We just recently had one retiree pass away and has a handicapped child, so that widow... Widow would get that increase, but we can't give it to the widow until we actually get affirmative vote, so we can have it for the record, and then we can give this widow that little increase.
Counselor Cooper, you had a question?
Would that be retroactive from the time?
No.
No.
No. The cost for this vote is $600 for the year. That's all it is, because that widow is getting $312 now. She's gonna get the difference between what it is today and what it was way back when. So, it's only $600 for the year.
Good. Counselor Janeda, you had a question?
Yes. On the... The... To the chair. It states that it's to the widow and then the children. So, and we're talking about something that passed in 2006. So, does this... The payments to the children end when they reach... I'm sorry, reach adulthood?
I'm sorry?
Do the payments to the children end when they reach adulthood?
Yes, when they reach 18 or full-time student. Yes, when they hit 18, the payments stop.
Okay.
Yeah. Except for the handicapped children. That is...
Well said. Okay. All right, well said. Thank you so much for your time. I do need a motion on the communication, councilors. Counselor Garcia. If no one objects, is it okay to take it out of New Business, just to vote on it now while we're on the topic? Call a roll call. Thank you, Counselor Garcia.
A yes would be to accept the provision. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Abadana?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Perlatanda, absent. Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Ray Coopero. Ten and favor, and unopposed, one absent. Motion is adopted.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next communication is a copy of a communication received from Jessica Calberg, Roque Director of Strategy and External Affairs, regarding scheduling a formal presentation to update the council on their work to reduce recidivism and decreasing violence.
Recidivism. Can I have a motion?
Something under New Business. Last communication is a copy of a communication received from Jeanette Centron White regarding the actions approved at the November 12, 2019 Traffic and Parking Commission meeting.
Counselor Lopez moves to accept and file a communication under suspension. I'd like to acknowledge Rosemary Carlisle from the School Committee who's here, and City Council-elect Todd Taylor and Naomi Zabit that are here today.
Okay. First order under New Business order introduced by Counselor Brown. An order transferring proceeds of reborrowing that are no longer needed to compete... Complete the project for which they were originally borrowed to pay cost of an alternative capital project as authorized by Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws. That in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, the sum of $260,000 was appropriated under the fiscal year 2017 Capital Improvement Plan for roadway improvements, hot on street free cash project account number, and a balance remains after the completion of the project for which the fund was authorized, which is no longer needed, to complete that project, and therefore, that balance of $34,753.61 is hereby transferred for the roadway infrastructure improvements to the FY '20 Signalization Upgrades at select location project project account number.
Counselor Brown? Move to a second. Move to a second reading. Did you wanna speak on it, or... No? Okay. Do you want me to read something? We have another order introduced by Counselor Brown. This, in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, the sum of $400,000 was appropriated under the fiscal year 2018 Capital Improvement Plan for roadway improvements, Congress Ave., free cash project account, and a balance remains after the completion of the project for which the fund was authorized, which is no longer needed to complete that project, and therefore, a portion of that balance, an amount of $244,778.63, is hereby transferred for roadway infrastructure improvements to the FY '20 signalization upgrades at select locations project. Counselor Brown?
I'll move to a second reading.
Got it.
We have the next order introduced by Counselor Vido, requirements for a grant of location and licensing. It is expressed purpose of municipal zoning to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the city of Chelsea, and whereas a specific objective of the city of Chelsea zoning ordinance states the need to encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the city of Chelsea, whereas the federal law has changed with the advent of 5G capabilities and the city administration, and determined that the new process for handling requests to install new 5G facilities require change to the zoning ordinance.
Counselor Brown?
Can we wait for the rest of the readings?
Yeah, we already discussed this.
This is the one going to the planning board?
Correct.
And, okay.
Thank you, Counselor Brown.
Schedule-- Tax rate, tax rate, that's big. Are you all right? Okay. The next order introduced by Counselor Brown. Whereas the renovation of multi-use playground facilities such as Eden Park are a priority detailed in the city's 2017 open space and recreation plan.
Second reading, move to a second.
Okay.
Second reading.
Second. Subscription.
Counselor Brown?
I wanted to say to the public, because we have some public here that's probably not sure what's going on. So this here is something that we've already voted on in the past. This is funding satisfied for parks. We have one tonight, Vog Park and Eden Park. The one with Eden Park, which one we just moved to a second reading, which will take place at our next meeting, will require an additional $90,000 for us to vote on. So I just wanted to let you know, this is something that we've already had in subcommittee conferences. We've talked about it, and it's an upgrade on the park, actually two parks, Eden Park and Vog Park. Thank you.
That's coming up next. Yep.
Okay, the next one is Vog Park.
Move to wait the reading and move to a second reading?
Yep, thank you.
Next order introduced by Counselor Garcia, request that a mandatory meeting be held with all parties making decisions on storefront signs in downtown Broadway. Stakeholders should be able to provide a clear timeline to participate businesses, and this meeting is to be held in English and Spanish.
Counselor Garcia?
To adopt unanimously under suspension if there are no objections, and I wish to speak on it.
You have the floor, counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. So essentially, this order is regarding a grant that the city council approved to provide grants for some of the business owners in downtown, and they basically get $10,000 to improve the signage, the storefront signage. However, this has been passed down to different people, organizations, foundations, and personally, I've spoken to some of the businesses that have decided and were so eager to participate on this project very early on in the year, but the timeline keeps constantly changing, the main points of contact keep changing. So what I'm requesting is, I know, and I also recognize, this is the first time we run a pilot program like this, so of course, we're gonna come along with kinks and issues here and there. However, I think it's so important to be transparent with the messaging. I've spoken to a specific business owner who has been waiting for months for this grant to go through, personally removed his storefront signage, which has brought an impact to his business. So I think we need to be fully transparent, very communicative with these organizations, and I think it would be beneficial for this board to actually know who are the main players and who should we be referring to when businesses come to us. I want to be able to say, you know, I would love to share more about this project with you, and here is your main point of contact, and I don't have that, because I keep getting different names each time. So I'm requesting for this meeting to happen with all stakeholders, every foundation, main points of contact that we should be targeting, and also the businesses who were invited to participate in the first place. And I also want this to be done in English and Spanish, so we can communicate clearly and transparently. So, thank you.
Thank you, counselor.
Next order introduced by Counselor Garcia, order that the city looking into allowing Chelsea residents with outstanding excise car tax bills to submit payments through a monthly payment plan.
Counselor Garcia?
A motion to adopt unanimously under suspension if there are no objections, and I wish to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, counselor.
Thank you. So I will actually pull my phone for this one, because I will read something out of it, but before that, I will explain why I brought this request. And it's only a request for the city to look into it, I'm not asking anyone to make a decision on it, but I'll tell you a story. So this summer, I had a constituent reaching out, because as we all know, there are high rents, and families unfortunately find themselves in situations where they have to have two jobs, three jobs, to actually pay their rent. And unfortunately, this person didn't have enough money, you know, she was paying her rent, has two jobs, is on disability, her kids are working two jobs each, and--
Which one?
And she just didn't have money for food. And on top of that, she has an outstanding excise car tax bill to pay that she just simply couldn't afford. She was willing to pay it, and she came to city hall, and when she came to city hall, she realized, you know, I wouldn't pay this, but I can't afford to pay $1,000 upfront. I can only pay it in small sums, monthly. That was the only way she could pay for this. And unfortunately, she couldn't do that. So I was really touched by it, because I know that this was a story of a woman that actually picked up the phone and asked for my help, and I was very limited on what I can do. So I did some research, and that's why I'm gonna pull up the phone. And on the research that I did, I actually visited the Secretary of State's website, and I also contacted the Congressman Joe Kennedy's office to see if there was anything that we could do on our end to help her make monthly payments, which I think should be reasonable. And this is what it said. So it says, in terms of collection, local tax collectors are responsible for collecting the motor vehicle and trailer excise. Generally, tax collectors and deputy tax collectors do not accept partial payment of an excise bill. Again, key is generally. So what I'm asking the city is to look into allowing residents to make monthly payments of their excise tax if they are finding themselves in a hardship. I am not asking for us to waive it. I am asking folks, I'm asking the city to give city residents the opportunity to make monthly payments if that's the only way they can make this. So that's my request. I hope that we can have a positive response to this, and that the council can support this, because it would be very helpful for families like Maria's, who really found herself in a situation where she couldn't afford to pay $1,000 upfront, but could have made monthly installments. So, thank you, that was my long speech.
Thank you, counselor.
The next order is introduced by Counselor Pearl Letanda.
Is this a subcommittee?
Order that the Traffic and--
I'm sorry, excuse me?
This is ordered to the subcommittee, she just wanted the city manager, she didn't want us to further discuss it.
So I just want-- Response from the city to see if this is feasible.
It wasn't, yeah. I thought under suspension.
Exactly, under the suspension.
I sent it to the phone, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Next order introduced by Counselor Pearl Letanda. Counselor Robertson will co-sign it. Order that the Traffic and Parking Commission put a 30-minute meeting starting at Chelsea Cleaners 467, 471 Eastern Ave. for local businesses.
But this order is out of order, so it needs to be amended, because we cannot order the TPC to do anything.
But I'll amend it and make a request.
Make the request and then send it to the Traffic and Parking Commission.
Right. Yes.
Sure, I know, we've done it before.
Request. To consider. Drop that under suspension? Yes.
Unless there are any objections? Okay.
Next order introduced by Counselor Pearl Letanda.
Yes, the same one.
Again, order that the Traffic and Parking Commission look into putting a loading zone sign by the side entrance door at the Chelsea Cleaners located at the corner of Eastern Ave. and Cavalier.
Same, except the file will send it to the traffic.
Got it.
Yeah, Lee Robertson.
We have an order introduced by Counselor Ennio Lopez. Order that the city manager instruct DPW to install two digital solar crosswalk indicators on Central Ave. and Shama Street, one each way. Counselor Lopez?
Under the suspension, there's no objection, I would like to speak on it.
Seeing none, you have the floor, counselor.
Yes, the reason I'm asking for this digital indicators at the crosswalk on Central and Shama is because there has been a lot of accidents there, and also I have seen that the people who are driving both ways on Central Ave. don't really allow people to go across. So that's the reason why I'm asking for this. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another order introduced by Counselor Lopez and Counselor Judith Garcia. Order that the city manager and DPW commissioner look into a way to replace street and sidewalks on Lynn Street from Central Ave. to Chester Ave. Counselor Lopez?
Adopting the suspension, if there's no objection, I would like to speak on it also.
Seeing no objections, so moved, you have the floor, counselor.
Thank you. Yes, walking around the district, I see this Lynn Street. It's a short street from Chester to Central Ave. I know they were doing some work a while ago, and they did, I don't know what they did, it was like probably 10 years ago, but they left the street in really bad shape, and I think it's time to fix our streets. Thank you.
Counselor Garcia?
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, I will fully thank, I owe credit to Counselor Ennio Lopez for bringing this motion up. He's entirely right, you know, this street does need some repaidment, so thank you so much, counselor, for bringing this to our attention. And as he mentioned, Lynn Street, for many of us who have been there, the houses are absolutely beautiful, and many of the residents, all the residents that live there maintain their properties. So I think it's our duty to really help out and fix the streets for them. So again, thank you, Counselor Ennio, for bringing this up.
We have an order introduced by District 2 Counselor Louis Tejada. Request that the Traffic and Parking Commission look into potentially putting a speed bump or some other concept that will force people to minimize their speed on Summit Ave. Counselor Tejada?
Under the file, under the suspension.
Did you want to speak or not?
No.
Okay, so moved, counselor. I'm gonna keep going.
Go ahead.
We have another order introduced by Counselor Louis Tejada. Order that the Traffic and Parking Commission look into improving the safety at the corner of Franklin and Jefferson on the Franklin side by removing some parking spaces that will allow for free-flowing traffic with minimal congestion. Counselor Tejada?
Under the file, under the suspension. Seeing no objections, so moved.
Did you want to speak on it?
No.
Okay. We have another order introduced by Counselor Louis Tejada. Requested that any city money going to the Chelsea Collaborative cannot be used for voter registration. Counselor Tejada?
Under the file, communication, there's no objection.
Seeing no, adopting unanimously under suspension. Seeing no objections, so moved. Another order, introduced by Counselor Louis Tejada, ordered, requested that the Chelsea Collaborative provide the council with the number of people they registered to vote.
Under the file, under the suspension, there's no objection.
Seeing no objections, so moved. We have an order introduced by Counselor Giovanni Recupero. Request that the Traffic and Parking Commission inform the elected officials of potential traffic and parking changes in their districts that will impact their constituents. Counselor Recupero?
I'd like to move this to a suspension, I would like to speak on it.
No objections, you have the floor. You'd like to move this to a roll call? Okay, we'll move it to a roll call?
Anybody?
Anybody want to speak on it? Counselor Cooper, did you want to speak on your order?
Yes, I would like to speak on it.
Go ahead, you have the floor. Do you have a, I'm sorry, do you have a counsel, Garcia?
Yes, I'm wondering what the roll call is on. I mean, I know that, I see the request, and it's going, it's a request for the Parking Commission, so I'm trying to understand what the roll call is for.
We'll request a roll call.
You, boy. He wants a roll call.
But roll call for what? Like, am I avoiding it to go to Traffic and Parking? Am I avoiding for it to, what am I voting roll call on?
So he's a roll call on the voter, so that's at the traffic park.
It's a request, not an order.
I'm assuming that it doesn't inform the elected officials, that this doesn't go through, so, so yes, do you approve of this, or no, do you not? So Counselor Recupero, what did you want to say?
This is plain and simple. For all the people that outside, they don't know, the parking, we cannot tell the Parking and Traffic Commission what to do. We, they bring us something, and at the end, we can say yes or no. But they do whatever they want to do. The council here does not have power to tell them what to do. So here's the point, they come to you and say, we're gonna change this in your district, and we can't tell them, you can't or you cannot. They do what they want to do. So what this means is, they turn around and say, we're gonna make your street one way. Well, how's it gonna affect the people that live there? Well, we don't care, we're gonna do it anyways. So this, what it does is, it tells the people before the traffic, at least give us the courtesy to each counselor that the Parking and Traffic Commission can say, well, okay, we're gonna do this, but we're gonna let you know at least what's going on. You can go to the meetings, okay, this is what's gonna happen, but when you go to the meeting and it doesn't tell you, that's what's gonna happen. They go to another meeting, and then they enforce it, and then by the time it comes to you, it's already done. So it should be, that it should come to each council, all of us, and they should say to us, okay, this is what we intend to do on your district. Well, since they don't have, they don't have to tell us, because they can do what they want. So isn't it time that they at least inform us what they're gonna do? Because they affect the lives of all the constituents we have. So shouldn't it be important to the people that we represent that at least the district counselor and the councilor-at-large would know what goes on, instead of the person calling you, hey, did you know they put a speed sign over there that says do not enter? Well, oh, did you know that it's okay, that you can go down two ways instead of one way? Oh, so, you get the point? Thank you.
Counselor Avellaneda?
As entertaining as that was, everything my colleague just said is absolutely wrong. On our agenda tonight, if you take a look at Part 7, ID number 20C12, we receive every month or every meeting, usually, a communication from the Traffic Commission stating, A, what they voted in the last meeting, B, usually what's gonna be in the next meeting. And we actually have to approve the communication, i.e., approve any actions that the Traffic Board does. Tonight, we approved the meeting, and therefore approved all of the handicap placard applications that they voted for. In the past, there have been items on the Traffic Commission, agenda items, that this board did not feel in favor of, and has taken action and has voted no against, for instance, parking meters or implementation of parking meters in some parts of the city. So to stand here and say that this board doesn't get notified, that this board doesn't have any option to say no to something, is absolutely not true. So I just want to know, why are we making something up and asking for something that already exists? That's all.
Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I think my counselor has the right attitude far as trying to figure out, you know, what's good for him and his constituents, but I don't think the, we hire, we appoint the parking commissioners to go out and do a job. Counselor here, the alge counselor is correct. Every month, we get notices of dates, we get notice of meetings, and we have an opportunity to appear at these meetings, to opportunity to hear what's going on, what's being proposed, and also what changes will be made. Tonight, we voted, we heard two orders to ask the Parking Commission to allow 30 minutes parking on, I believe it was Hooper and Eastern Ave. So every time we ask the Parking Commissioners to do things, we just can't ask them to come to us and say, hey, by the way, tomorrow, we're gonna have this handicap request in your neighborhood, you need to come here and voice your opinion, and also, the residents are requiring some of these things. Tonight, we have counselors requiring an order to be before the Parking Commissioners to do the work. We're not in a position, and I don't want to be a counselor to try to bring our council back to that everyone has to come to us. We have a City Hall, we talk about transparency, we talk about openness and engagement. So, this is an opportunity, we have these meetings. If we really want to know what's going on, we can say, "Oh, look, tonight, I have something before the Parking Commission, this is my district." Usually, if it's something that's really, you know, debatable, I'll go. If it's something that I know a resident want a handicap or they want a speed bump or something in their neighborhood, I say, "Okay, that's what the residents want. No need for me to go there." We only go to these meetings when we want to voice our opinion or we have some concern. Other than that, I don't think it's, I don't think we should be ordering any members of any board, the city manager, the Parking Commission, or any board to come tell us what's going on. I think we have a responsibility to find out. That's why we were elected, to find out what's going on in our communities. It's much harder for at-large counselors than it is for district. But district counselors, we're always out in the district. You know, that's why a counselor can say, "Over 10 years, I've seen what's happened in this district, and we need to engage and prioritize in this district." And that's why we support it and move forward. But we should not be really honestly telling folks to come to us. That's a bad impression. Thank you.
Councilor Recupero. Counselor, come on. Counselor Bishop?
Thank you, Madam President. What the counselor is trying to do here is already being done. We, as counselors, every month, get the agenda for the Traffic and Parking Commission, licensing, planning, zoning. First thing as a city counselor I do is pull up that agenda on my computer and look to see if there's anything in there for my district. If there is, I mark my calendar, you've got to go to that meeting on that date, whether it's zoning, planning, licensing, or Traffic and Parking Commission. So, that's the first thing I do every month when those agendas come up. Is there anything in District One that I need to know about? If there is something, I go to that meeting and let them know how I feel about it. And the counselor-at-large is absolutely correct. We do have the right to say, "No, you can't do that." So, what he's trying to accomplish is already being done. That's why, does he want them to send us an agenda and then also notify us? I mean, that's kind of like, they only have one staff person, I know, on the Traffic and Parking that does that and 300 other things. So, to add another thing to it, I don't, that they're already doing, I don't see what the point is here.
Thank you, Counselor Bishop. Councilor Garcia?
Thank you, Madam President. And just to clarify, I was literally just confused on the beginning roll competition, but it was more of a logistical confusion than what's in front of me. But I understand and I acknowledge my colleagues' good-hearted intention. However, I fully agree with Councilor Avellaneda and some of my other colleagues who have mentioned that we are informed of what goes on. And even though we don't have the decision-making power of deciding what is decided in every single one of these items, I think it's important to give them the power. I think it's important, I full-heartedly believe that these, no, no, I'm actually not going with you. So, let me just finish. So, what I'm trying to say, I understand the good-hearted intention, but what I'm trying to say is that we have the power to vote every time these folks are appointed. And I personally have been to these traffic parking commissions more often than not. And I feel that the board right now is a pretty fair board. We actually have a group of, it's composed of some professionals there that have other points of view that I think have been very helpful. So, just for the folks at home, you know, we have residents on that board. We have someone from the Police Department, we have someone from the Fire Department, we have someone from Planning there. And having all these multiple visions in that board is so important to make decisions that I know have an impact in our city and sometimes not to the best of your outcomes, and I get it. But I also believe that it's so important for these commissions to have an autonomy. So, I will not be supporting Giovanni Recupero, apologies. But, but, yeah, again, I understand the good-hearted motion, but we do have the power to vote against it, so.
So, he's withdrawing it? He wants to withdraw it?
Okay.
All right, so Councilor Recupero moves to withdraw the order.
Our next order introduced by Councilor Recupero. Request that the Traffic and Parking Commission remove the one-way sign between Essex, Sherliffe, and Congress, and also remove the one-way sign on Ellsworth Street.
Councilor Recupero? Seeing none, you have the floor, Councilor.
This is something I like, I was, okay, I'll explain to you simply. Sherliffe Street is one-way coming from Central down to the bottom of Congress. And it's two-ways coming up from Marginal Street all the way up to Essex Street. Then, about 200 feet of it is closed. So, the people that live in that section, they can't go to their house. They have to go all the way around. Why? For a small section. If you have it, now, you have, both sides have done the right way. One is coming straight down and one is coming up two ways. They should have extended it. They should have extended it to come in. So, the poor people that are living in that block don't have to go all the way down and all the way around just for them to go to their house. I think it's very unfair for them to do that. It's only a small section. You're not changing anything. You're only allowing the people that are there to go to their own houses.
Thank you. Councilor Avellaneda?
The earlier changes be to the order that we're not ordering the Traffic and Parking Commission, but just simply asking that this be placed on the agenda.
Yeah, because it says that they remove the one-way, but it should be recommend or that they look into. Okay, Counselor? Recupero? Counselor? Can you bring your microphone down? We're going to amend it because we can't order the Traffic Parking Commission to do anything. So, we're just going to have them look into it.
Oh, man, it's time to look into it, to make it fair for the people there.
God, just wanted to make sure that you were in agreement. Okay, thank you.
Order introduced by Council Robinson. Request that the city manager instruct DPW to provide the last three years of floor calibrations per meter for all water and sewer.
Councilor Robinson?
I'd like to also amend that for the MWRA, actually. That's who I'm requesting information from. This is a follow-up to a conference we had a while back, and we were told that it would take some time to get this information. It's been a while now that we haven't received the information. So, I'd like to follow up on it. I know that we have issues with our meters. I can guarantee you that MWRA has issues with their meters and whether we're being properly
Charged.
Charged or not. So, I'd like to look at the calibration.
Thank you, Counselor. And so, you're, you want to
Adopt unanimously under suspension.
But you're set, you want to send this over to, you want the
Well, DPW has to get it from the MWRA.
So, you want DPW to get that information from the MWRA?
Order introduced by Council Brown. Order that the Chelsea City Council adopt a minimal residential tax factor for fiscal year 2020 with a 1.75 commercial, industrial, and personal property CIP shift factor.
Councilor Brown?
Because we have a meeting for next week for the public.
Okay, thank you.
Next order introduced by Council Brown. Order that the Chelsea City Council adopt a 31% residential exemption for fiscal year 2020.
Councilor Brown?
Move to second reading. Also, next week, we know we'll have a public hearing. So, please be informed that if you have any concern about this request of moving it up to 31% for residential exemption, please come out. Before the vote, we will have a public meeting, and you can have your concerns heard by all council members in the chamber. Thank you.
Order introduced by Council Vito. Order that the Subcommittee on Conference be held with Walker and other nonprofits that receive money from the city to report the status of their programs in a nonprofit accountability series.
Suspension, if there are no objections.
Seeing none, so moved. What's that? That's it? That's the missing
That's the missing
That is it, right?
We read it, we read it.
Yeah, we did, we did. And that is it. So, now, public announcements. Councilor Recupero?
I'd like to thank all the constituents of District Six for voting and voting and putting me in to serve them for another term. Yo quiero decir gracias a toda la gente de District Six para ponerme otra vez para representar ustedes. Soy muy orgullo de representarte. Yo trato de hacer las cosas mejor por ustedes. Gracias.
I just have an announcement. It's related to the order that Councilor Recupero put in about the issue with Traffic Parking Commission that he essentially pulled out. I think that that's just, we just have to do better about the way that we exchange information here in the city and the way that we reach residents. And I think that, while I understand what you, there is a process in place, but I just think it's just not enough to reach the residents. And so often, I get phone calls from residents that say, "Oh, I, this happened in my building and I didn't know about it," or "in my neighborhood." And so, I just think that we overall need to figure out how to get better about exchanging information. I know the city has done its due diligence in getting on social media. We have counselors that are really out there, but we just need to be better. And it's just crazy, with all these different mediums, we still can't figure out how to reach people. But nonetheless, I just wanted to make sure to highlight that. I also wanted to thank the people of Chelsea for allowing me to continue to serve as your counselor-at-large in Chelsea. I got the most votes in the city, and I am honored to continue to serve this community. Anybody else? Council Brown?
I want to also thank everyone for came out to vote on the election day. That was great. But we have another election day that we want you to participate in, and that's the 2020 census. This week, a few council members here and some staff from the City Hall we gathered for our first initial meeting, trying to get a town committee for the 2020 count for the United States Census, which is done every 10 years. So, we need you to be informed, we need you to be engaged. We need your help to get the official count of the city of Chelsea. Many of you, even us here, we realize that the number of residents that's on the books are much lower than it actually is, and we want to get the resource for the higher number. But we need you to be engaged and also be aware that with the census coming up, the information that's being requested is somewhat kind of bogus and frightening. But we've been told by the representatives from the state level and the federal level that this information that you give to make this count accurate will not be information that they can indict you on or investigate you on. So, we want to do our part here in the city of Chelsea to get everyone that's engaged into the 2020 census count. If you're interested in being a part of it, please speak to any city council member. If they're not aware of it, just get their number and call here, and we'll get you the information and make sure that you're aware of the next meeting that's going out. So, we really need you to go out and tell your neighbors, tell your students, tell your church members that, hey, we really have to take a part in the census, and we're hoping to have a lot of information up on our website in the next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Brown. Council Lopez?
Everybody already said it. I want to thank again also to all the people from District Four. But my main reason is to congratulate all the electoral officials again for next year. But to the newcomers, I want to congratulate you guys. And we welcome you, and I hope we can work together for next year. And congratulations.
Anybody else? Any moments of silence? All right, let's do moments of silence if there are no more announcements. All right, so I'd like to have a moment of silence for Jimmy Riley.
Also, Lieutenant Jason Menard of the Worcester Fire Department.
I just want to echo Jimmy Riley, longtime employee of the Chelsea Senior Center, who I heard this evening passed away. Nice kid, Jimmy, all of his life, Chelsea resident, and a wonderful guy.
Yeah.
And it's very sad to hear of his passing.
Yeah, I just want to say something too about Jimmy. He was better known as the Watchman. He watched over everyone. He had that radio on, he called city council members and said, "Hey, this is what's going on." So, it was sad to hear his passing, but may he rest in God's love and care.
All right. Seeing no further business, but for us, we're adjourned.